Okay, we are ready to begin our Committee of the Whole. Thank you for being with us. Everyone is present except Diane and she's been excused. But we want to welcome everyone here. And we will start with approval of the minutes of our Committee of the Whole October 5th, 2021, and Committee of the Whole October 19th, 2021. Are there any questions or corrections on those minutes? And if not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve October 5th and October 19th.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Brooke?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. You know, we didn't do it before and we usually don't do that. I didn't realize how Brooke kind of went, okay, I'll do it. Hey, I got that. I know how to read, Brooke. It was almost like, well, we don't usually do that, but if you'd like me to do it, I'll do it. Thanks, Brooke. Okay, next we have our first, on our discussion items, our first one is a land use text amendment to add to land use number 2834, radio pharmaceuticals and the GO, CD and PO zones, and addition, excuse me, and addition of LU number 2834 to the standard land use code. Melinda, and Melinda, she's pointing, it's going to be Susan Nixon, and that's it. I was going to say, and Zach, because Zach's sitting there. So, welcome Zach anyway, and Jared and Melinda.
Thank you. So this application was submitted from IHC Health Services in a joint venture with Pharmalogic, a radio pharmaceutical company. For those of you who do not know, the land use category there, 2834, is a numeric system that our Planning and Zoning Division does that assigns certain uses a number, and they are lumped in categories. So this request from IHC is for a new land use text amendment and to add category number 2834, which is radio pharmaceutical manufacturing and products, to the general office zone, the hospital zone, commercial, CD zone, and our professional office zone. Radio pharmaceuticals or medicinal compounds are a group of pharmaceutical drugs containing radioactive isotopes. Radio pharmaceuticals can be used in diagnostic and therapeutic agents. When we initially got this application, they had proposed to amend our current definition under regular pharmacies, land use category 2833. But in discussing with them exactly what they do, we decided it was very specialized and a very limited, high-skilled use and probably needed to be differentiated from a regular pharmacy. So in discussing with the IHC representatives, we decided to come up with a new land use category, number 2834, which is radio pharmaceuticals. And the definition as proposed up above in the red is radio pharmaceutical manufacturing preparations, meaning an entity that is engaged in manufacturing, preparing, propagating, compounding, practice of pharmacy processing, packaging, repackaging, or labeling of pharmaceutical drugs containing radioactive isotopes. So this proposal is, like I said, very limited and very technical. It is produced by neuroscientists, not your regular pharmacist. It is highly regulated by the FDA, Department of Transportation, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and on a state level also, by the DEQ. So how they do this, I'm going to try to explain to you from a rookie here, try to explain to you the very complicated process. But the manufacturing of positron emission tomography, or PET they call it, radio pharmaceuticals are performed at a cyclotron radiochemistry lab or a vault. PET is a diagnostic technique that is computer-assisted with x-rays to track radioactive substances in the part, in the body. And the radio pharmacies, they are staffed by trained nuclear pharmacists. So this drug is specifically created for patients who are, have cancer, different kinds of cancer, prostate, ovarian, breast cancer. It also is used to detect Alzheimer's disease. So the reason that they are requesting this is, again, to treat the different types of cancer. There are currently three other radio pharmacies in the state of Utah. One is up at Huntsman Cancer Institute. However, none of the three existing pharmacies have the capability to do these new innovative drugs. And the difference of those is the new ones have a very short shelf life, anywhere from 10 minutes to a couple of days. So it's critical that they be in close proximity to where it is treated, to where the patients are treated. Typically, when we talk about a text amendment, we don't refer to a specific site because a text amendment is for the entire zone of which it's applied to. And in this case, the request is for the GO, the H, the CD, and the PO zones. And I'll explain to you in just a moment why it's specifically in those zones. But normally, we don't discuss a specific site when it's a text amendment. But in this case, it's a little bit, it's critical to the request. If the text is amended and this new land use category is approved by the council, the IHC applicants are planning to have a facility at one of their buildings that they own. It is at 383 West Vine Street, which is the Stevens-Henninger Building. That's the location they would like to have this facility at, rather than IMC. We asked them, why not at IMC? And their response is, you know, due to the SSOD overlay site, the smelter site, they felt it would not be as easily to convert a building or improve the property with all the regulations. But that this, the Stevens-Henninger property is in close enough proximity that they would be able to have the drugs transported over to the patients at IMC. Matter of a few minutes. So the property at 383 West Stevens-Henninger is currently zoned in our, currently located in our GO, general office zone, which is section 1744, 17144 of the code. And in looking at their proposal, we decided that would also be a good idea to include the H zone, which is our hospital zone. And the only location we have for that is the Tosh Center, on Russian Boulevard. And also, the IMC hospital is located in our CD, commercial zone. And then the general plan or our future land use map for the Stevens-Henninger property is for professional office. So it made sense to include the other, all four zonings. Also, currently, this land use category, the broader category, let me go back to this, 2800. So 2800, as you can see, has numerous different uses. And the 2800 category is currently allowed in our MG zone. So if this is, if this new land use is adopted, it would also be applicable to the MG zone and also our BP professional, our business park zone, of which we don't have any properties. And Murray's own that, but the potential is there. So the Planning Commission reviewed this application in a public hearing on October 7th. Public notices were sent out to the affected entities. We did not receive any comments. The Planning Commission voted unanimously with a 4 to 0 recommendation, positive recommendation, that the city council adopt this. We did have one commissioner abstain since he is employed with IHC. This proposal, our findings, we did conclude that this text amendment does meet the criteria for our general plan. It would serve an excellent service for the city, the valley, and the entire state, actually. And it does meet the purpose of our Title 17, which is zoning ordinance. So based on all of that, staff is recommending that the city council approve the proposed text amendment. Of course, this is a discussion only, but that's what the request would be, to approve the text amendment and to allow as a permitted use in section 17144, O2O, 17148, O2O, 17160, O2O, and 17174, O2O, which are the GO, the H, the CD, and the PO zones, respectively. And then also to adopt a new land use category, 2834 pharmaceutical manufacturing. And I am happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Susan. Questions?
Yes, why would we want, or what's the purpose of rezoning all four of those sections of the code? If we could just redo one?
Okay, good question. So while we're not rezoning, we're just adding that use.
The use to those, to those four zones, sorry.
So the location of the Stevens-Henninger is in the GO zone. So that was their original request, was just specifically for the GO zone. We tried to look a little further down the road and thought, you know, if for some day, someday they wanted to have this at IMC, IMC is zone CD, and so that made sense to us to do that. Then the Tosh Center is also possible, I mean, future possibly could go there. That's zone H for hospital. And then our PO, professional office is the long-range plan for the Stevens-Henninger property.
I guess just, I'm trying to understand. I understand for like the first three, but for professional office, would that change the condition for all the other professional offices? For then this?
It would be, it would be allowed for any property that's zone professional office.
Yes, that is what I mean.
So yeah, text amendment would, is applicable citywide to any property in that zoning district. However, it's not quite that simple for this, for this proposal because it's such a highly skilled, high-level use.
Right. Could we rezone the PO to be an H or something within the first three zones? I mean, could we rezone Stevens-Henninger to fall into the first three categories versus changing professional office completely?
Yes, that would require a general plan amendment also, though, because the general plan does call for it to be professional office. So it would require a general plan amendment and a, and a zone map amendment to do that.
Okay.
But, you know. True.
I'm just trying to understand the process and just kind of, and how it changes the code completely. And maybe that's a conversation with GL a little bit more in depth, but if, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the process, really is what it is. Because that just changes the professional zone completely, too.
It doesn't really change the zone. What it, what it does is it gives.
Or the condition, I mean.
Gives the opportunity in the future not to have to come back through the process when it comes to Stevens-Henninger's, that particular property. But the chances of this, of something like this going into all these different zones at every location are like zero, right? This is, this is going in one location right now. And, and this is, this is a process we don't go through very often because we don't typically see something we don't have already categorized in some way.
Right.
But what staff is trying to do is look down the road and say, okay, supposing that IHC looks at this and says, we like what we have at Stevens-Henninger, we want something onsite. Then you have to go to the CD zone because that's what the smelter site allows IHC to be zoned. So it's, it's, I don't think it's, I'm not concerned about that it's going to cause a lot of different problems. As Susan's pointed out, it's so regulated that the chances of anybody else doing this are very slim.
Because next thing you know, we're this hub for.
Yeah, there's only one of the.
Which is fine, but.
There's only one other facility that actually has the same capability at this point. And the closest one is Denver. And so, but it's not possible to get these radioactive drugs to a patient within the short timeframe that they need. They actually, in the cyclotron vaults, when the neuroscientists do, the nuclear scientists, excuse me, make this product, then they put it in a container, which is then delivered by an employee of the pharmacy company. And, and then they take it over to the hospital. So it is very regulated. So yeah, the chances of it being somewhere else is almost nil.
Perfect. And my next question is the safety to citizens surrounding.
We asked the same question. In fact, that was, that was our initial response. We were really concerned about it. So we did a Zoom conference with IHC representatives and representatives of their company that they are doing this joint venture with, which is called Pharmalogic. And they explained to us the process and how it's done. And actually, I did have that in our PowerPoint, but we took it out in the last minute because I thought, I'll believe that for when the public hearing is on December 7th. We will have representatives from Pharmalogic and IHC both that can explain to you all the safety regulations, et cetera. But from what the takeaway we got from them is that, again, it is so regulated and they are so, such highly skilled people who deal with this, that the safety part of it really is none. In fact, it was interesting, the one lady that was here from Pharmalogic, she was, she is the neuroscientist, nuclear scientist, she explained that when a patient comes to here, to say IMC, to get a treatment, they would give the treatment to the person. It takes about a half hour. And an hour later, they're walking out of IMC with no radioactive particles in them at all. I'm probably explaining this wrong, but basically, that was the gist of it. And, and that as far as, say, for instance, a driver had a wreck on the way from Stevens-Henninger to IMC, she explained the safety protocol for that, too. And there is a protocol that basically, they just put a lead, lead brick or something to that effect over the radioactive particles and it just is gone, dissipates. I'm probably saying, you know, I'm not explaining it exactly how it is. But after discussing all that with them, we felt really comfortable with this request and that the risk and the safety was not an issue.
Any other questions? Thanks for that, Salva.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand because opening it up to all general office, the reason that we wouldn't become a hub for this is the short shelf life of the radio pharmaceuticals that they do. So they couldn't make them on 53rd South and send them to Detroit or something. It would just be for right here.
That is correct. And again, the facility where they're treated has to be real close proximity. You know, most of these are, again, the shelf life is 15 to 20 minutes from the time they make it to the time that they give it to the patient. So yeah, it's really critical. So yeah, the chances of it going somewhere else is.
Quick question, just to add to that. As far as the building, what are the protocols and the safety requirements? Does that come with this product as well?
Yes, I actually discussed that issue specifically with our building official as far as the occupancy and safety that would be involved. In fact, the cyclotron vaults are built specifically for this product, this production of that drug. They cost over a million dollars. It is encapsulated, basically, the neuroscientists go inside that lab, they make the drug, and then it's put in the canisters and sent out. So it is very contained. And then I, our chief building official asked him about it and he said, based on the building that they would like to go into, the Stevens-Henninger, they would have to get a building permit for somewhat of a remodel to have the lab in there. And that he felt, actually, that the building was probably an ideal building for that use, assuming, you know, they would have to do a little bit of a remodeling, et cetera. So again, we felt comfortable with his response for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thanks for touching on the transportation. I thought the Planning Commission asked a lot of really thoughtful questions about the safety and the transport was my initial concern. And so just thanks for touching on that. But it seems like a really great use.
Yeah, I think this is a, to be honest, I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime chance for Murray City to really be on, you know, on the map for, yeah, high technology and it just goes hand-in-hand with IMC campus. So I think this is a great opportunity for Murray and, and the state, actually, all the state.
Understood. Any other questions for Susan? Okay, thanks for your questions. Thanks, Susan, for your presentation. All right, we will move on to discussion number two, a resolution approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city, Salt Lake County, and Salt Lake City Corporation for a Brownfield Assessment Grant. And that is Susan.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, so this request is for, well, Murray City staff, we have been asked again to participate in a Brownfield Coalition, which is a partnership between Salt Lake County, Salt Lake City, and Murray City. And in order to do that, we need to have an agreement that's approved by resolution of the council. The grant was for $600,000. This is our second grant. We received the first one in October of 2019. The grants are good for three years, but we spent our money so fast that it's gone. In fact, we heard from the EPA that that's the fastest ever that a coalition has spent their $600,000. So good for us. Anyway, because of that, we're now on to the second one. They do overlap by one year. So this next grant is, starts in, actually, October 1st of this year and will end in September of 2024. So basically, for those of you who aren't familiar with our, the fund, the grant fund, it's used basically to help contaminated sites. And Murray has our fair share of contaminated sites. So this is actually an awesome program. It is in place to help environmental cleanup and inventory preparation, site selection, assessment planning, and cleanup planning related to the Brownfield sites. Brownfield basically means just contaminated properties. The county is the lead coalition partner. They are the manager, so to speak, of the program. And then it is, we have coalition members from the three different agencies. So two from Murray, two from Salt Lake City, and two from Salt Lake County, plus the manager. So there is a seven, seven voting member. Our main goal and our duties are basically to administer and spend the funds to help improve contaminated properties. I think we just covered that. Let's see, so our, yeah, our duties and policies for administering of the grant is to, again, select properties and help possible development of those sites by having environmental studies done. Now, the studies that we can do are Phase Ones, Phase Twos, and cleanup plans. And our goal is to do 18 Phase Ones and 12 Phase Twos and six actual planning plans, planning documents. When we submitted our application, actually, it was a year ago. One thing about government is things don't, don't happen fast. So we submitted our application a year ago. They awarded this grant in May, and then it started October 1st. So, but we need to get the agreement in place and then we can start doing assessments on properties. But when we submitted our application, we had to give them ideas of property or projects that we were going to pursue. And the one for Murray, of course, is our central business district. Now, that doesn't mean we're stuck solely in that area. We can do any properties in Murray that qualify for the grant. So just for your information, on the coalition, myself and Carlos Montoya, who is our new civil engineer, are the two representatives from Murray that serve on the coalition. And TerraCon is our environmental agency that we work with. And that was selected through an RFP process. This is a, just shows you the basic, how we spent our money in the last grant, the 2019 to 2022. This actually is not up to date. I got the update five minutes before I walked out of the office to come over here. So, but it basically shows you where we spent the money. The RDA property that is future site of Think Architect, we spent approximately $42,000. And we go down to, some of these projects, when we start, they don't end up coming about. They, you know, for whatever reason, developer pulls out or timing's not right. These environmental studies are only good for 180 days. So timing is critical, you know, to try to coordinate with developers or potential projects. And then after that, if the 180 days expires, they can update that. But if you had looked down at the other one, at the bottom one, the 4800 South, the RDA-owned property, we did a Phase One and a Phase Two. And the SAP, that's a sample, sampling and analysis plan. And then we're in the process of getting the cleanup plan done. Actually, I'm going to give you the updated amounts because this is not correct. But we, we definitely got our fair share of money. The $600,000 we spent over, we got over $200,000 for Murray projects. Hold on, I've got it right here. Yeah, $204,666 went towards Murray. How we, initially, when we get the grants, we try to disperse the money evenly between the three agencies, $200,000 more or less reach agency. But it doesn't necessarily, we're not held to that because, again, timing is, is, really has a lot to do with how the money's spent, you know, how far along the projects are for being developed. This gives you an idea of our budget for this next grant of the $600,000. It does allow for some outreach programs, some program support funds, and then remediation and site inventory assessments, et cetera, the total of $600,000.
I'm just curious, what are some of the outreach programs that you guys would be involved in? For funding, and then next page, for travel or outreach?
Oh, okay, so the travel.
What that would entail?
Good question. That actually, I was privileged to go to their Brownfield Conference, December 19, yeah. Yeah, 2019, December of 2019. Which at that time, we had just ran into this whole thing. And to be honest, it was overwhelming. It is extremely, extremely educational. There's a lot of professionals there who know this program really well. It was actually very beneficial. I would recommend it to anybody. But now that I'm a little more up to speed on it, I actually think it would benefit me more to go now. But anyway, so it does allow for some education and training and then some outreach, outreach programs to, you know, pamphlets, et cetera, to disperse to people, to get the word out, to let them know that there are funds available for the studies.
That's awesome. I get a lot from those conferences, so thanks. I was just curious.
You've been involved. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, so anyway, just to summarize, Murray City is just requesting that the city council approve the city resolution in support of the interlocal agreement for the Brownfield Assessment Grant for the $600,000. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Can we get those numbers updated for our next week's packet?
Absolutely, yes.
That way we have them.
I actually hoped I would have got it sooner than I could have plopped in here.
Yeah.
I said, literally five minutes before I walked out the door, I got them. So yes, I will do that for the next meeting, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Susan on the Brownfield? Great question, thank you. And next, thanks, Susan. Next discussion item number three is a zone map amendment from A1 Agriculture to, A1 Agriculture to R18 Low Density Single Family for the property located at 5700 South and 800 West. And Zach Swanwood, thanks, Zach.
This is your favorite part, zoning map amendments. It's what you guys love to talk about, right? So it's located here just to the west of Viewmont Elementary. I think that's the name of it. I'm really bad at school names, but I'm getting better, so. And just to the west of that, it's about a one-acre site. All right, I'm sorry, it's a little bit larger than an acre. I apologize. And so they are proposing, this is the current zone, is A1 Agricultural. They are proposing to go to R18, which is a single family, low density, 8,000 square foot lots. And the general plan, as you guys know, indicates specific land use categories for each area. This is located in the Low Density Residential District, so this includes the A1, R18, R16, those zones. So within the Low Density Residential, as you can see, I just mentioned that. It's right here, so there you go. So it does, it does align, so we don't need a general plan amendment for this. This is just a typical, just a standard rezone. So couple zone comparison information. In the A1, the existing, it requires a one acre minimum lot size. The R18, it's 8,000 square feet. They have the same height requirements. There is a little bit less lot width, 100 feet in A1, 80 feet for R18. Setbacks are largely the same, just about five feet off the front setback in the R18. Excuse me. And then two off-street parking spaces for each, for each dwelling unit. So their planning commission held a public hearing on October 21st. Thirty-nine notices were sent out. We received one public comment, which was, which spoke to traffic and parking when school events are held near Viewmont and River View, I think. There we go. I'm getting there. And ultimately, the planning commission voted seven to zero to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Findings, the proposed zone amendment's been considered with, with the characteristics of the R18 zone. We think this is a good fit for this area. Again, planning commission voted seven to zero to forward a recommendation of approval. And that's that. So that's our recommendation as well as to adopt the zone map amendment. Any questions? Excuse me, any questions I can answer at this point?
Questions for Zach?
I flew through that really fast, so.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Okay, next discussion on zone map amendment from, am I correct on it? Yeah, R18 Low Density Single Family to R16 Medium Density Single Family for the property located at 871 West Triplane. So Zach, thanks, Zach.
Yeah, so you guys probably remember this property. It's been in, it's been talked about quite a bit past year or so. This is Salt Lake Neighborhood Housing Services, also known as Neighborhoods, requesting to go from R18, which is 8,000 square foot lots, to R16, which is 6,000 square foot lots. It's located here, just west of River View Junior High. And I apologize, I don't remember the size of the property. I think it's like, I don't know, I'm not even going to say it because I don't remember. It is currently in the R18 zone. The city council adopted the zone map amendment a little over a year ago to change that from the agricultural to the R18 zone. This is the exact same thing, just how the general plan works. The R16 actually is included in the Slow Density Residential Future Land Use category. So this doesn't require a, a change in, in the general plan designation. So a lot of, there aren't a lot of changes here either. They're just very, they're miniscule. You do get a height reduction in R16. You can only go up to 30 feet instead of 35. Obviously, the single, the lot sizes are about 6,000 square feet, about 2,000 less than the R18 largely. So the front setback is 20 instead of 25. Side yard setbacks is probably the largest thing. It's five feet on either side. And then two off-street parking spaces. So the reason why the applicants are asking for this is they originally had come forward with a subdivision with two options, one with the road going through, one without. And then as they started to getting into designing that with the, with a cul-de-sac, they were noticing it was a lot harder to get some of those lots to fit in there. And the R16 is just a better fit for that, to keep the same yield of lots. So I believe they are actually going to get three additional lots out of it for the R16. So a couple findings, the planning commission voted six to one to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. This does fall in harmony with the general plan as it stands right now, the future land use map. We believe that it helps increase housing affordability, being able to provide additional lots. Those smaller lots can, can be a little bit more affordable for people as well. So we are recommending that the city council approve the amendment to the zone map for the property at 871 West Triplane. Questions from anyone?
Question for Zach on this. Nope. Okay.
All right.
All right.
Cool.
You think you're going to fly through this? You're not flying through this? Now, next, next. No, let's go to number five.
Hey, the next one, that, that's all Jared.
That's all, I love it. I love how he said that.
Yeah, we're, we're out.
You're out. You said, look at him, peace out. Thanks, Zach and Susan. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Number, discussion number five, discussion on a general plan and zone map amendment from the, from CD Commercial Development to VMUVX Village Mixed Use for the, sorry, for the use of the properties located at 861 East Winchester and 6520, 6550 and 6580 South 900 East. Jared, thanks, Jared.
Yeah, thank you. So those addresses that you just listed off are what people know as the old RC Willie property. This is a multiple part application. It's two parts. It's a, it's a land use map amendment, the future land use map amendment, and as well as the zoning map amendment. We, these parcels total just about nine, just over nine acres. The RC Willie is vacant at this point, as you're all aware. So as we go through these slides, if you have any questions, please feel free to jump in, okay? Because it's, this is, we're going to cover some territory that's fairly familiar because we adopted these, the VMU zone that's in, under consideration was adopted in late July. So some of this will seem familiar. If you have questions, feel free to jump in, okay? The existing zoning, as you mentioned, is CD zoning, commercial development zone. Excuse me, the surrounding zones around it, you can see listed there, A1, you've got the Wheeler Farm, et cetera, and then a lot of R18 along this north perimeter here as well. The request is two parts, as we said, because that future land use category is currently general commercial on that future land use map. They're requesting to amend that to the Village and Centers Mixed Use in support of the requested zone. So we'll come back around to that kind of a part of the discussion in a moment. But moving on at this point, the general plan, there's some support for that in that, in that area, but we'll come back and talk about those again. When we looked at Village and Centers Mixed Use as a general plan, as a future land use category, we wanted to make sure that it was an area that would provide that, the appropriate opportunity to do mixed use. And that's part of how we wrote the zone as well. That VMU zone has kind of standards to say what properties ought to be considered. Will it do certain things? And we'll review those real quickly as well in just a moment. But it does, it does fall in this area right here, in that retail center area, city retail center. So it's, it's one of those areas where we wanted to consider those kinds of changes. A couple of things that the change to Village and Centers Mixed Use as a, as a future land use category would support in the general plan are listed here, to encourage revitalization along key transportation corridors, to encourage form-based development patterns. That's, form-based development would be concerned more with how, how, how big the buildings are, how much they fit in with things, how, how likely they are to be near the street and create a pedestrian environment, as opposed to just what uses are allowed in different areas. We don't, we're not using a full-on form-based code. That's a whole different animal. But we have some of those same elements written into the, into the zoning that we're hoping for. And then encouraging, again, housing opportunities for a variety of ages and family sizes and financial levels. We did mention that there was those considerations for VMU zoning. This does check some of the big boxes really, really easily. It should be existing commercial property. The RC Willie was obviously commercial. It should be considered only, that VMU zone should only be considered where we're talking about three acres or more. This is nine somewhat acres. And it should have been used, used or zoned for non-residential uses, and that was the case as well. So those are the first big considerations. It meets those. The second part of it is to look at an area, and my red box is off kilter, but that's the dangers of redoing your slides. But the, it should be in an area that is identified in the general plan as a sent, as a node, what we call, what we call nodes. City centers, regional centers, things that we identified in 2017 as being areas where changes might be appropriate, that were a little bit out of the bounds of the normal considerations. Some other considerations, it ought to meet at least five of these nine goals that we've kind of adopted for that VMU zone. And we feel like this, what we've listed here are the ones that we feel like it meets, as opposed to those that it doesn't. It, it does meet most of them, in our opinion. And the question is, this is a question that got asked, and I feel like it's worth reiterating or explaining again, because maybe it's confusing to people. But it's not a question of whether the project that they're proposing, a project that they're proposing would do these things. It's a question of whether using a mixed use zone instead of the standard zone that was already there would result, would accommodate these kinds of changes better. So would it result in high-quality development of commercial properties? Yeah, we, we feel like it would. This RC Willie site was specific to RC Willie, and RC Willie is gone. We want to retain commercial, that this is a way we can do that without waiting for some other big box that may never come around to get in there. We can retain some commercial. Same with that second test. Increasing local access to commercial services, promoting a greater variety of housing options within Murray neighborhoods. A lot of the point of mixed use zoning in, in general, not just for the VMU zone, but in general, is to create more options for people for housing, more choice for housing. Will it promote opportunities for life cycle housing and more, more moderate income households? Would it provide increased walkability, create and contribute to a sense of place and community? Would it result in improved conditions for buffering? And we feel like it can answer all of those questions in short.
Can you, sorry, just to stop you, can you explain what modern, what, what, what defines modern housing?
Modern income housing?
Modern income housing.
Eighty, the easiest definition is less than 80% of the median income in the area. So that, it is a bit of a moving target because that median income is going to shift. It's a lot higher now than it was 10 or 15 years ago, but it's still 80% is what we look at. Most, even conventional loans are now talking about if you can make 120 or 130 or 140% of the median because things have gotten so expensive. But 80% is still what the, the state defines as moderate income housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So $75,000 a year is a median income?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range. It's.
Okay. Just, I wanted to know what the definition was for that.
That's perfect. I think we do different levels. 80% is the top, though. 80% of the median income is what we would consider affordable or moderate income housing.
Then, okay, I guess what would trigger if it was, it could be lesser than that?
Yeah, it can definitely be less than that.
What would trigger that? Or what would the conversation be?
Well, for this, it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily matter. We just want to try to, 80% is the level that everybody does the best at, right? They, 80% and less, 60% and less, and then there's 30 to 50% of the median income. And we're going to be filing for December 1st, just as a side note, our modern income housing report that we're required to do every year with the state. And those numbers, I'm just, I'm just getting into from the census data now. But when you look at the housing that you have in the city and the price of that housing versus what's, what of that housing meets the necessities of people at those income levels, being able to get those, those units at 30% of their income and not spending more to be cost burdened. It's, it's always zero. That number for 30 to 50% is zero for us, and I'm assuming it's zero for a lot of cities in the valley. It's very tough.
Okay.
And it always assumes in that number that they're not going to be spending more than 30% of their income for their housing to not be cost burdened.
Thank you.
You bet. Great question. And modern income housing is very much in my mind with that report coming up. So we'll, we'll file that and then give you all an update on it when you're feeling up to it. So, okay. We do find that it meets eight of those nine kind of considerations when we're looking at whether we should apply or even consider applying VMU zoning. We've had a couple of conversations with different applicants, for example, where we can go through these first tests, these, not just these nine, but those, those first three categories and say, look, you're not in one of those areas that the general plan identified, so we're not going to be able to support you, so head, head out. Or you're not three acres, or you haven't been zoned for non-residential uses, so we're not interested. We're not interested in rezoning residential stuff to mixed use necessarily. Okay. I went right past where I was. Something else that we wanted to make sure we cover real quickly is that these kinds of developments, under the Village Mixed Use Zone, the uses that are mixed use oriented uses all require what's called master site plan approval. And so if the council were to, for example, allow the rezone of this property, it would then have to come back to the planning commission. The applicants would take the rezoned property, go to the planning commission and ask for what's called master site plan approval. And it's, one of the concerns that we had when we were talking about these zones, when we were developing them, was that we wanted to have a certain level of security in our thought process about whether it was appropriate or not. To, to answer that, we came up with this plan of saying, requiring for master site plan approval applications, you have to have a traffic impact study done before you apply. We don't ask for it as a condition of approval, et cetera. You get that done before you come to us. You get a parking analysis done. You have an adequate public utilities and facilities review with the public works department and any other service providers. And anything else that we feel like might be necessary, parks or fire or school, given the particulars of the property. So that happens first. Then if they do make the master site plan approval, or they do make the master site plan application, they go through that process with the planning commission. And if they're given a master site plan approval, they have to come back to the council for a master site plan agreement that memorializes what they agreed to with the planning commission to do. We can talk about that more if you have any questions in just a moment. Just a couple of things to point out about the VMU zone and the differences, really. The residential allowance is 25 units per acre as a base. And then, as you're familiar with, in these tables, we, we outline things that you can do as a developer to try to get additional density allowances. Some of it has to do with affordable housing, like we were just talking about. If you can guarantee that 10% of the units will be reserved for households that have incomes at no more than 80% of that area median income, then we might be able to give you another, another five units per acre on your project. Parking, so the VMU's densities run between 25 and 35 units per acre. Difficult to get to the 35 units unless you're really proposing a lot of additional things or working hard for it. And then we did increase the parking requirement, recognizing that these are not mixed use zones or developments that'll be really close to transit. So they're providing some mixed use benefits, but not the kind of parking benefits that we look for if we're right next to a station. So another thing to, to be aware of, and the reason I put this particular picture in this slide is that we, we talk about density a lot. It's kind of the, the overarching topic for these kind of zones. But density looks different in a lot of different places. When we walked through Sugar House, you saw a lot of projects that were well over 100 units per acre. They don't necessarily look like they're over 100 units per acre as a building. So take the density as a, as a grain of salt, or with a grain of salt, anyway, and, and think about what we're doing to buffer areas and, and keep heights down, et cetera, and building mass, et cetera. We wanted to focus on that with the buffering, and we'll get to that in just a moment. But the densities in this zone would be 25 units per acre to about 35 units per acre. 25 units per acre is a standard, 20 units, 25 units per acre is a standard kind of an apartment complex that you're used to seeing in the valley, Stillwater, those kind of places. But again, the form can be very different when that's spread out over different areas. Just a couple of quick notes in that slide. If you have any questions, we can, we can talk about them specifically. But a couple of things to point out really, really quickly. A base requirement for open space in these projects is 15%. One of the ways that we allow them to go a little higher for their density under the current zoning is to increase their open space and their amenities. We require two project amenities when you're going up to 150 units and another amenity every 100 units after that.
Jared, can you just talk about some of those amenities?
Yeah, and I appreciate the question because it's a, it's a new deal. We've relied in the past on developers to just provide their amenities out of, I was going to say the goodness of their heart, but that feels disingenuous. So out of, out of necessity to attract tenants, right? We wanted to make sure that projects, that all projects had an amenity component, at least projects over 30, over 30 units. And we have different, we don't really specify that you have to do these examples, but we've got some examples. Dog parks, patios, pools, play fields, that kind of thing. And the reason we wanted to require more amenities and to offer them more density if they put in more amenities is because that, that publicly used open space does a couple of things in projects that are more dense. When you don't have your own yard, you need that, that community area to go to and be in. And it provides that space for you, but it also creates more of a community in that development. So when people are provided that amenity and they're going and using it, when you're using the same playground, you do get to know your neighbors from the other townhomes or from the other apartments. Where if that amenity is not there, you don't have that opportunity, and you don't create that sense of community.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Would an amenity be, my garbage is going to be valeted?
No.
Okay.
It's just a service.
I just want to make sure, there's a clarification.
Valet garbage is great, but it wouldn't count as an amenity. That would just be a service there often.
And would there be a list of amenities or is there a list?
In the zone, at the end, and it's kind of, it's, it's kind of more of an illustrative list. They could add things to it and say, we want to do this. But for example, if they ask for valet garbage to be included in their amenities, But for example, if they ask for valet garbage to be included in their amenities, we would say no.
Okay.
It's got to be.
I just want to clarify that, because I know there's some cool bougie things with developers coming in.
They are, they are great.
Yeah.
Dog, a dog wash associated with the dog park, we'd probably count that as part of the dog park amenity.
Okay.
But on its own, maybe not. It's got to be something that everybody would benefit from and use.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Really good question. Thank you. Let's see, the planning commission did hold a hearing on the twenty-first of October. Hundred nineteen notices were mailed to everyone within five hundred, five hundred feet. We did get a lot of public comments. I was on the phone all week and had a lot of comments at the meeting as well. The planning commission, and you can see the concerns that were there, we feel like we've addressed those concerns through the zone as it was written, but those concerns are still there in the public. The planning commission did vote five to two to forward their recommendation to you as a council to approve the zone change. Before I finish up, and I'll just show these slides to you as well, and you can ask any questions, the boyer company was at that meeting, obviously they were the applicants, and they heard all those requests, they've, and they've started to try to respond to those kind of concerns. We don't typically show concept plans, but we told them we would show you just kind of their response so far to the meeting that they had and, and make sure you're aware of what their, their thought process is right now and where they're headed. They've, they heard those neighbors' concerns, the height of the building, the proximity to their residences, the parking and traffic, utilities and the overall density. They heard those concerns at the twenty twenty meeting as well in the planning commission. They applied for the mixed use zone back then, late in twenty twenty. They withdrew that application after that meeting as we started to go into looking at different zones. But in that previous mixed use zone, they heard the same kinds of concerns, and this is their response, saying, you know, we've decreased the allowable density, created residential buffer zones in this VMU zone that we were proposing now. And they feel like those things will allow them to create a project that would respond to the neighbors' concerns. This is a letter from them, talking about, it basically just says what I just said. They'd like to develop the property with a mix of commercial and moderate density housing. They're, they're looking at a project that would be about twenty-one units to the acre, not actually to the twenty-five. That's largely in response to being able to keep things away from the neighbors' property lines to try to make it as similar as possible to what was there previously. They've given you a zone comparison that I actually have already gone through some of those things, but they've included in the mixed use zone that was what they applied for back in twenty twenty. That's really not on the table anymore. It's the village mixed use zone. When they were looking at the mixed use zone, they were working on concepts that looked somewhat like this, three hundred and sixty-four units at forty units the acre. You can see kind of the townhomes they were looking at developing on the north side to try to buffer the neighbors with less density than they would put out on Winchester. Under the VMU zone and hearing the neighbors' concerns the other night, they would be looking at doing something more like this, trying to create as much space as possible through parking and open space to the neighbors on the north and west, and kind of clustering their density out on, out on Winchester and around a central court. This is, this is a response more to the neighbors' concerns than it is to the actual zoning code, at twenty, twenty-one units the acre and clustering them all that way. We like to see a mix of, of housing types, et cetera, as opposed to necessarily that. But this was their take at looking at the neighbors' concerns and how they could maybe address those. Commercial would be confined to the area here on Ninth East that they control, and then possibly ground floor units here if they need that for the space, or ground floor commercial on Winchester. Some concept images they gave us as well, the type of units they're looking at, and the massing that you'd be seeing with those buildings in the center.
Jared?
Yeah.
When we talk about mixed use compared to just like apartment housing as its own thing?
Yeah.
What's the minimum amount of commercial required for a mixed use?
For mixed use? That's a great question. And I blew right by that. It is, it is based on their frontage, on the project's frontage on principal streets.
Okay.
And in this area, we define the principal streets, including Winchester and Ninth East.
Okay.
They don't actually have as much frontage on Ninth East as you'd think, because they only control a couple of the parcels that go all the way to Ninth. So we take that, that area, and then we take a forty-foot depth of that area and calculate a number and say, you need, for example, twenty thousand square feet of commercial
Okay.
to make your project viable.
Thanks.
So I don't know exactly what the number is here, but it's something, I think I'm not far off on that. Between thirteen and sixteen thousand square feet. Great question. And they, one of the things, this is, I wanted to mention, I mentioned it to them on the phone when they were showing me these, these images, they're willing to enter a development agreement to, to limit the scope of their project to this level, to the twenty-one units per acre. And as luck would have it, they have to do that anyway. That master site plan agreement that we, that we talked about, it's just the order of events is really the concern. The, the master site plan agreement is a development agreement, so they'll be doing that regardless. And that, that master site plan agreement would cover things like the allowed density, the required parking, the location of the buildings, and the order in which everything was built. Do they need to do the commercial first before they get certain numbers of permits for residential, et cetera? The difference is, what they're suggesting here is that we would enter into a development agreement today, before we get the zone, saying we won't do more than twenty-one units. We cannot do that. That's not how our code is written. It, it would allow them to, sorry, it would allow them to enter, it would, it would happen after. But the zone would have to be put in place before we could really consider that kind of thing. So we did make these findings, and they're, they're nothing unique, you've seen these same kind of findings before, but we do feel like as a staff and the planning commission on their vote, that it meets these requirements of the general plan to be considered for that VMU zone. We think it could result in a really good project, and we are recommending approval of both the amendment to the general plan and the zone map. Any, any other questions about the things in there? You got to have some, because I totally forgot to talk about how much commercial is required. You caught me on that one. That's good. There might be others too.
Go ahead.
I have one question right here on the master site plan slide.
Yeah.
You say applicant for master plan approval must provide the following. Have they provided all these?
No.
Because we're not.
We're not there. If they got the zoning, you got to think about it in three steps.
Explain that process, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. If they were to receive the zone change, then they would come back with a project application that was a master site plan. And in lots of cases, like, let's say you're building a new seven eleven. It's not a great example, but let's say you are. You're building a new seven eleven, and we might, depending on where it is, our public works department, planning department might say, you're going to want a traffic study, but you don't have to do that right now, because it's just a seven eleven. We have some concerns, we think it's going to be okay. One of your conditions of approval is get a traffic implement, a traffic impact study and implement any of the things that it tells you you need to do. So you move forward and get it. In these cases, we're going to ask for that upfront, that they look at what they want to do, commit to it, get a traffic plan done, get a parking analysis done, get the public utilities review done before they apply to the planning commission. So all those questions are already fleshed out, and we can discuss them better.
Okay. And then visually, can you show us again what zone we are currently in and what we're changing it to?
Yes. Let's see. So this zone right now is CD zoning, and there's nowhere on the map that currently shows VMU zoning because it does not exist anywhere. I didn't have a zoning map today. Yeah, this is the zoning. It looks almost just like the future land.
Okay.
It doesn't, we've not applied it anywhere, so I don't have it anywhere.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
And then one last question. When they do apply, and let's say we all come to, could we, well, one, first question, how many units to the acre are going to be housing, I mean apartments versus condos in the affordability? Are they going to market rate? How, is that something that has been discussed?
Yeah, we've talked about it with the boyer company. I think their current plans for this, and they can correct me if I'm wrong in the, in the public meeting, but their current plans would be for rental units, for rental product here. But that can shift when the market changes. Mostly, we don't dictate that in the code. We let the market kind of dictate whether they would do rentals or condos. And frankly, it differs from developer to developer. Some developers are more comfortable doing condominiums as opposed to apartments, and it changes with the years. In nineteen ninety-eight, when I started doing this, everything was condos. Not, not this particularly, but, but a lot of condos. In fact, they were taking old apartment buildings, I don't know if you guys did this in Murray, but they were taking old apartment buildings and converting them to condominiums. That was a categorical disaster, at least in my world. The few that I did did not go well, but everybody wanted condos at that point. And then that has kind of shifted over that last couple of decades to back to apartment units are very in demand in a lot of places. So we're seeing a lot of, a lot of that product.
Can you talk about why they're in demand? I'm trying to understand this concept, because I keep getting told that millennials don't want to buy, so they want apartments.
Sure.
And I know that that's just one biased market research. So I want to understand why apartments.
I think that's probably, I think there's some merit to that argument, but I don't think that's the whole picture at all. I think you're probably right. A lot of it's just financing. A condominium still requires a down payment, and when you're looking at three hundred and eighty thousand or four hundred thousand dollars, you know, when you're looking at your first house in two thousand and it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you could swing that three and a half percent or five percent or twenty percent even down payment. But when twenty percent of the down payment is a couple hundred thousand dollars, that's not happening. So some of it is just market financing, I think.
Well, I mean, yes, I get that. I guess that's another, another, that's another arm or another explanation that I've had. But we also have various programs where we could put people into housing for condominiums versus apartments, because you're still paying maybe twenty-two hundred for an apartment.
Yeah.
And then a mortgage could be less than that. So I'm trying to understand, I've, I've heard, and I've even heard people say, you know, we want to create generational wealth. Well, how do we do that with apartments? And how do we do that for our citizens in the future?
With apartments, you absolutely don't do it. Absolutely. And the trick in, and I don't, I don't, I don't really know the answer. I don't know that there is a good, I don't know that there is a good, solid answer to what you're asking, because it's a.
No, I would love to have this side, even if it's a side conversation, because I'm trying to understand decisions that are being made for my generation and future generations that could potentially affect us.
Yeah.
As a city and as a state and even as a country. So I'm trying to really understand how we create projects like this with the mindset of, well, apartments are just in right now.
Right.
Like, that doesn't seem like a viable answer to.
But I mean, they're not in because of a fab, like, you know, the color of your counters, you know?
Right.
It's an economic, it's an, it's an economic phenomenon that we're in, and it's, it has to do with low wages, it has to do with environmental choices of not wanting to be responsible for a yard, it has to do with not wanting to be responsible for replacing your refrigerator and the fence that falls down, and that economic security that can come from saving because you're not paying those type of things. So it's a different perspective, and not that, like, that answers all of it, but.
But how do you, how do you support? I mean, I guess for me, if I'm, if I'm working, I'm just going to give an example here. If I'm working in a restaurant and making minimum wage, how do I afford a twenty-two hundred dollar apartment complex? And that's what we're getting into is, is how does, how does, because it's going to be medium range. It's not going to be something where.
It's not low.
Somebody.
But the more apartments that there are, the more of homes there are, the more supply there is, and the cost will work its way down. We're not going to lower rent by not building more housing. Like, we need to be building more housing.
I, I, and that's, I get that. I do totally get that. I hope that that's true. I really do. But right now, the way that it stands, apartments are just as much, and you don't get anything in return. And the one thing that I keep hearing over and over again, what if there were programs for us to go into where we can, whether it be like a one-bedroom townhome, whatever, that we can buy into and use programs like NeighborWorks or other programs to help us get there? And I'm, and what I'm trying to say is, I totally get that. I've been in that situation too. But how do we, everything is going at market rate, and the market right now is high. And it's just going to, from what I'm seeing, it's predicting that we're, we are phasing out people for low-income housing. And how do we be mindful as a city?
Even with, seriously, even with, I've noticed, we call them millennium, millennials, I've noticed that, our youngest son's twenty-seven, and his, are doing exactly what you're saying. They're buying condos or they're buying townhomes that, because the apartments, especially some of these apartments that Rosal was talking about, are not your fifteen hundred, thirteen hundred, they are the two thousand, twenty-two hundred. And they're finding out that they can purchase, and like Kat said, some don't want to do that because of the maintenance and those things, but there are, I'm finding out, there are plenty that want to do that, that want a yard, that want some kind of a ownership to build their equity, so that, because they believe the market's still going to go up, so.
But we don't determine whether it's rental or to own, so it's sort of.
Yeah, one of the primary reasons for that is, is that, at the end of the day, the city's not building this housing, a developer is. So it has to make sense to them and their financial pro forma. To build condos is a different construction method. It's more expensive, there's a lot more involved with, with the condominiumizing of the project. There is a lot of lawsuits that come in after the fact. And so because of that, one of the things that developers are doing is they are mitigating that long-term risk of lawsuits that, that come in through the Home Owners Association and incorporating that into their pro forma upfront. And so that makes condos more expensive. And when it comes right down to it, then, you know, you're looking at a condo that's seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, and that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to a lot of people either. So there's, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but, but you can't take away the factor that unless the city or the RDA is providing mitigation to them to have affordable housing, it doesn't make financial sense to them. And so they're going to go with what the market says, and if the market says there are apartment rentals that would be supported, that's what they're going to do.
And the beauty of that is, we as a council get to listen to our constituents. And as Jared mentioned, this happens to fall in my district, and, and the constituents in District Five have made it very clear, there were, I don't know how many showed up to that planning zoning, but some of them showed up at my doorstep that night, welcomed, I welcomed them in, and lots of phone calls. And so as I represent the, this council or this district, they're, they're absolutely not for this at all. So, so I know novel idea that me voted in to support my constituents, you know. For me, sometimes some of this makes sense to me, but when I listen to the constituents and I really take that I was voted in by them for me to represent them, then this becomes easier for me.
It's a good, it's a good question, and it, like I said, it doesn't have an easy, doesn't have an easy solution.
No, thank you for entertaining the question.
We're, we're good at, as, as, America is good at finding ways for people to buy[1633.03] We're, we're good at, as, as, America is good at finding ways for people to buy things they can't afford. It's kind of, it's kind of the American dream, I guess. We need to get better at, at supplying more so that things even out. It's really just a supply and demand question. And it'll come down and we'll, we'll find trickier ways or, or more creative ways to get people into places that do want to build equity and want to take that risk. But the more housing choice we provide, the bottom line is, the more housing choice we provide, every one of those units, even if they're not, they're eighteen or nineteen or two thousand bucks a month, every one of them that goes online rental, and I don't mean just in Murray, in the Valley, that reduces the cost because it's more supply, reduces the cost on, the, the term we keep throwing around in planning is naturally occurring affordable housing. It makes it sound like it's plants growing someplace, which it obviously isn't. But there are affordable, there are units that should be affordable right now that aren't because the demand is so high. They were built in nineteen forty, whatever, and have not been updated and are not ideal. They're not affordable right now either because there isn't enough new market rate either. So that helps as well.
Yeah, the vacancy right now for rentals and apartments is under two percent across the whole state and in the Salt Lake Valley. And so that means that, like, literally, there's less than two percent of options available for people who are looking for rental.
You say that's for rental, Melinda?
That is, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's two percent for purchase of homes also. It just seems like, you know, we know, we've watched our kids and ten thou, or really fifty bids later, they're not accepted and they've offered well above. So I believe that is false for everything.
It's tied in both markets, rental and purchase, it just is.
Is there, sorry, is there a projected timeline of when and how they see the state growing? In terms of, is it like two years? Or will population coincide with housing? I mean, when they're projecting housing would be available to, so two percent becomes ten percent or whatever. Yeah.
Six, six, six percent.
So, so is there a projection for six at all? No, just keep building so we can make space is kind of what I'm getting.
Everybody's talking about it, absolutely. And everyone's trying to, trying to make up that gap and build the right kind of. That's why missing middle housing, we talk about all the time, is so important because it provides that kind of, it's, it's not an apartment. You get a, there's a better chance you're going to feel like you're part of your community and, and, but it's still, it's more affordable and more of it happens in a more sustainable way and you can, you can make up that difference quicker.
So I closed out of one of them and I can't find it again. But I will send some really informational studies to you all on affordable housing. The area, like, the impacts of high-density housing on single-family has a lot of really great information and specific to the market growth of the lease rates. That's, it's been about six percent per year over the last ten, twelve years. It'll show you specific Murray information as far as how many affordable housing units that we have. And, and what we'll do also is maybe just take some of those screenshots of those graphs and put them in a kind of all-in-one spot so that you could have like a, a one-shot glance. But there's a lot of different factors that, that go into it. And it's, it's just not a solution that can be met by just one, I guess, you know, one prod, well, one project, one approach. It's, it's going to have to be solved over time with a variety
And it just seems like it's a moving target because it's growing so fast, right?
Yeah, and that's very accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll ever build ourselves out of what we're looking at. I think what you're talking more about is the lower income and that's, that would be subsidized housing. Because a developer, unless it's Daddy Warbucks, isn't going to build something for, you know, that won't be at market rate. So there's other programs that have to, and, and that would be more on a state and a national level, to get subsidized housing in some of these. Because, like I say, unless there's somebody that's really rich and just wants to build one, a development.
Well, I don't, I don't think that, I'm not necessarily saying subsidized housing. I'm just saying, not even assistance program, I mean, for buying maybe, but not necessarily. The affordability on, on apartments is out, out of this world.
Crazy.
It's crazy. So that's just having that discussion and just seeing where, why, you know what I mean? And understanding the why.
Yeah, that's great. And that, and that's one of the things that the city and, and the state and everybody ought to be talking about all the time. And, and we will be to, to the point of exhaustion, I am sure.
I think it's already a conversation that's way, way past due.
Yeah.
I, I just want to talk a little bit too about what Brett said. I think if we're going to rezone an area, I think this area, I watched the planning and zoning meeting as well and I listened to the people that were there. I think, in my opinion, this area, because of the R-18 and the, the residential next to it, I think it would be more applicable to townhomes and, you know, single dwelling than, than apartments because of the, the housing that's already there.
So as, as opposed to mixed use though?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we can, we can take that as a, as an advisement.
Yeah.
It's
If they built, if they built townhomes and maybe some, they definitely wouldn't be affordable. But in, in that area, but I think that, that would be a better fit for that property if we're going to rezone it.
I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
I'm sure they do too. Any other questions about this particular applications?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read Diane's statement. And excuse her, she is not here. She's been excused already. Fellow council members, I'm sorry that I cannot be at the meeting tonight. Although I'm unable to attend the meeting, I would like to share my concerns about the RC Willie and the point on Fifty-third Properties being changed to mixed-use zones. I feel the changing of these properties from commercial to mixed-use, whether it be village mixed-use or centers mixed-use, will negatively affect Murray City. The RC Willie property could have as many as three hundred and fifteen units on its nine-point-eleven acre site. The point could have up to five hundred and eighty-five units on its thirteen-acre site. That, these seem like a very large development. I'm concerned that these projects are very dense and will not have enough parking to accommodate both the residents and consumers who will frequent the retail shops on these developments. Parking that floods out onto our streets is a big concern to me. Other concerns I have with mixed-use developments include straining the city's infrastructure, including power, water, roads, et cetera, overburdening our police and fire departments, increasing traffic in already congested areas within our city. I worry that traffic going to and from the point at Fifty-third will bring an increase to traffic inside Murray Park as people cut through the park to avoid driving along State Street or using the park for parking. Additionally, the crosswalk on Fifty-three Hundred South, Fifty-three Hundred South, next to Hillcrush Junior High is not a great location. And, and the thought of additional foot traffic to Junior High, to the Junior High where existing problems occur all the time is troubling. Finally, I have heard from many constituents that are not in favor of the city adding more mixed-use developments. I would like to see other creative options for what could have, what could be done with these properties without changing the zone. Otherwise, I'm not sure I can support these zones changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jared, are you, any more questions for Jared on this one?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Jared. I love it, I love it. That's the first time, he's never had any questions. He has a lot of statements. Okay, any questions for Jared on this anymore? Okay, thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
On that, okay, now we'll move to, thanks, Melinda. We'll move to discussion number six. On a general plan, nope, how about, is it five? No, it's six. General Plan and Zone Map Amendment from CD Commercial Development to CMU, Centers Mixed Use, for the properties located at Fifty-two eighty-three, Fifty-two seventeen, Fifty-one fifty-seven, and Fifty-one seventy-seven South State Street and One Fifty-One East Fifty-three Hundred South. Jared.
Thank you. And so those addresses, just like the last time, they correspond to the point at Fifty-third that everyone probably knows is where the Barnes and Noble and the Best Buy is, Mimi's Cafe, et cetera. So that shopping center on State Street, the Howland Group, Howland Partners owns and has operated. And their application is for the other of the two zones that we looked at for, it, it's the same application for general plan amendment because it's the same category, village and centers mixed-use. But they're asking for the CMU zone, the centers mixed-use zone. A lot of the same kinds of things apply here. So I'll, I'll be brief and let you ask any questions about this particular site as it relates to these same questions as well. But again, all the properties are in the CD zone. It is right by the park and the Ice Oval. The general plan has it in the category of general commercial. It's in the CD zone, it corresponds. I wanted to, I like this slide that shows it kind of in the context of where it is on State Street at that Fifty-third South corridor. State Street, you have Costco and the hospital and City Hall currently and the park right here and the station right here. It's close to the station and one of the reasons we're recommending the CMU zone for this as opposed to a zone that's really transit-oriented is because although that is close proximity, this is a pretty significant barrier. This is a, frankly, a kind of a hellscape of parking lot to get through to, to get between the, the project and the station. We'd love to see that change in the future, but that's a ways off. So this is an area that we feel like is appropriate for CMU zoning, the centers mixed-use. Again, the general plan looks at this area right now, it just corresponds to the commercial development. Their request is for this village and mixed, a village and centers mixed-use that would include the centers mixed-use zone. It is in this area right here, right there adjacent to these two different centers and on the BRT line. The Bus Rapid Transit is supposed to come down State Street within the next half a decade or so, maybe a little longer. But the Bus Rapid Transit will be a dedicated lane. It's Station Village is scheduled there. So kind of a large bus stop with a couple of amenities and carrying more people quicker places. So as a, as a BRT station, Station Village, it kind of qualifies for that as well as being adjacent to these neighborhood nodes and for regional centers and city retail centers for consideration anyway. And again, that's, those are those first three big categories we need to look at, see, does it even fit at all? We do feel like using mixed-use zoning here would encourage revitalization. Retail's changing. Mr. Howland wants to look at the possibility of adding a few hundred units to this site to keep it viable going into the future. The, the big boxes of Barnes and Noble and Best Buy and folks like that, their, their future is less certain. Their retail outlook is changing. They want to reduce in size if nothing else. And new tenants, new retail tenants like to be on sites that we call lifestyle centers where there are people living as well, residents as well. Again, encouraging a form-based kind of use, worrying more about the, the pattern of development as opposed to the kinds of uses that are there and allowing that mix of uses to give us those benefits that we want to see. Complimentary uses around civic spaces and again, supporting the Intermountain Medical Center. Putting residents and the availability of, of units right there by the medical center is a good idea to support the IMC's future going forward. It does meet those first couple of categories. It's more than three acres. I got my red box in the right place on this one, I'm okay. And it should, it's along a major transportation corridor. We don't want to just, we tried to write in those guideposts so that we didn't have to just consider mixed use anywhere anybody asked for it. But we had some basic guidelines to say, this is going nowhere, don't, don't bother trying to apply. This one makes it in those two regards. And then it does meet seven of the nine considerations for that CMU zone. It would result in high-quality development of those commercial properties. It allows for a significant reinvestment. He's kept the property up over the year. It's a very, over the years, it's a viable commercial center. Reinvestment, it would be great for us, we feel like, retain and rehabilitate that commercial use of significant, of significant portions of the property. Mr. Howland's not interested in tearing everything down and building an apartment complex. He's interested in adding a few rental units to an existing good commercial site. To increase local access to services, this would allow us to bring in different kinds of services, increase the restaurant pads on the site, that kind of thing. Promote a greater variety of housing options, absolutely. More opportunities for lifecycle housing in modern income households. We already had that kind of discussion about whether this kind of activity does that or does not do that. And like Melinda kind of pointed out, there's no single way to do that. We have to try multiple approaches. No single approach works, everything. Increasing walkability, it's, it's location next to the park and Diane's comments about the park and increased traffic and parking, very, very valid concerns. But again, on the, on the flip side of that coin, you have a lot of residents coming in that are right there by the park and who don't want to use their cars for, for things and would be utilizing that park.
Have, sorry to
Go ahead.
Has there been conversation about how to close the access to the park by car?
To close vehicular access? Not yet, we could talk about that in, if, if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question that keeps being brought up is
Allow like pedestrian access but not vehicle access directly from the site to the park.
Right.
We could talk about that. If that would alleviate some of those concerns, absolutely. Yeah. Because the, the real important access, it's not important to us as planners and I don't think it's important to Gary as, as the developer. If people can get from his project to the park in their cars, we want them to be able to get to it on foot and, and use it and, and be a part of that community there. So, yeah, it's a good, good question. The CMU zone ranges for, for residential density between thirty-five units per acre as a base and forty-five units at the top. You have to do, again, things with affordable housing or additional commercial space or more open space and project amenities to get anything beyond the thirty-five. Mr. Howland's concepts don't, don't even come close to the, to the thirty-five. But again, that's what's allowed in the zone and we're considering a zone change. Parking is required in the CMU zone. It's not quite as extent, it's not quite as stringent as the parking for the village mixed-use zone. But again, and we didn't really talk about it, but you'll remember from our conversations in August, where you really start to get more parking spaces required is at the three-bedrooms and two-bedrooms units. Because those are the more likely units to have multiple vehicles. So two and a half spaces for dwelling in at the three-bedroom and up, that's what we require in any apartment, any rental situation in the Valley currently or in our, in Murray currently. The, again, master site plan is required. This is exactly the same as the village mixed-use. If it were rezoned, you got to come back in and ask for a master site plan. And you can't do that unless you've provided those different things, traffics, traffic studies, parking analyses, adequate public utilities and facilities review and public services review. And that's probably, in, in all honesty, that's probably the review where we would talk about, or the traffic study, where we could talk about whether or not vehicular access could be limited to the, to the park in that, in that case. It becomes a very salient point because only so much density is going to be allowed on the project without multiple accesses out to State Street or other roads. So that's, you got access to Fifty-third South and State Street, that'll probably get you two to three hundred units, but it wouldn't get you beyond that. So you might be limited on the site anyway. Again, it would probably be part of that review and that's why we wanted to front-load those reviews, not for the zoning necessarily, but for the projects, for those master site plan applications. We did make findings with the Planning Commission. I should have a Planning Commission slide, but I don't seem to. So I'm just going to tell you what the Planning Commission did right, right here. We sent a bunch of notices. I don't know how many because I don't have that slide. We sent a bunch of notices. We did get a couple of comments, but not, not on the order that we did with the Boyer Company, obviously. We did make these findings, those similar to the Boyer Company findings. We feel like it's a good spot for mixed-use. It's an ideal kind of an area for a mixed-use development where people can live and recreate and work nearby and maybe have a higher chance of having them not use their vehicles as much or not need as much parking. And we can help at the same time, a commercial property that we depend on on State Street stay viable going into the future. The Planning Commission did forward a vote, or sorry, voted seven to zero to forward that recommendation of approval to the city council. And staff is maintaining our recommendation of approval and for both applications.
Thanks, Jared. Any questions for Jared on this?
I just, you know, this being in my district, again, I have the same sentiment about RC Willie as, as this, as this. I've gotten a lot of calls. And, and a lot of constituents who were like, I was there and I made a comment, I don't approve of both. And, and so the biggest concern for me is just, and for constituents, is the quality of life in, in this project being in relation to the park as well. That has been the biggest concern.
So again, like Diane's
Yeah.
statements, the traffic to the park, parking
The traffic to the park, the quality of life, the park's already super busy as it is. Would this just make it more congested with this property specifically going up in, in the residents? And so those are, those are very many concerns that, I mean, one, some, there's so many. And I think we all feel this, we're feeling, we're feeling a little bit of the pressure
Sure.
of, of this has to happen now kind of thing, so.
Well, it's a good, it's a good point about the parks. I would, I guess I would push back on the parks, think a little bit, the park's busy, we don't want to see the park get too busy. That's what parks are for. And we just implemented a Parks Impact Fee. This, this kind of project would pay one-point-seven-three-six million dollars to the Parks Impact Fee.
Right, and, and I, I pushed for that.
Hey, how did that number just come to your head like that? You're good.
Right, and I pushed for that. I just want to make sure, you know, that these conversations and that the concerns of our citizens are being addressed as well
Right.
in these conversations. So I'm, I'm very much aware of all of that.
I agree, I agree. And that we need to take those into consideration. I think the, the concerns about the vehicle traffic and the parking, those are, those are, I don't want to say they're more legitimate than the other concern. People using the park, I think there's ways to accommodate that. We get additional parks from this kind of thing happening and amenities here on the site where people are going to be visiting. And parks are meant to be used that way. So I, I want everybody in the parks all the time.
I just want to jump in on the walkability that mixed-use brings. And that as someone who uses the point at Fifty-third, all of those commercial places, we love going there to shop and I love going to the park, I hate parking either at the park or at point at Fifty-third and then trying to go back and forth. Walking through that parking lot is, as I think, what do we call it, a parking lot hellscape? Like, I would
There's that one part that's a hellscape.
Right, just, and I love, zero-scape. If we could zero-scape all the hellscapes, I would just be good to go.
Feel like that's
These are going to be what gets me in the Murray Journal this week. It's going to be amazing. But I just want to say like, the walkability is so huge and I love the idea of, one, providing more housing. I've heard from residents in Murray saying, gosh, I'd love to live right by the Barnes and Noble. And that big box, old model is not sustainable anymore. It's, it's not working and we have to let the businesses adapt so they can survive. And if we can let them have less square footage and some apartments that these people who want to transition out of their homes into a smaller, you know, they're getting, retiring, they want less to take care of, whether it's to own or rent, they love the idea of being right by that park and I love the idea of going to visit them and then safely walking to the park and not getting run over four times in that giant parking lot where there's not a bench, there's not a walkway, there's not those amenities for that community there. So I think it's a fabulous location for it. I know there's many things along the way for the process, we can't answer all those today. But for the purpose of the mixed-use, I think, I think it makes sense and I'm excited about it.
I've only got two meetings left, so I'm going to agree with Cap. I think, I think, I think the developer has shown that he has Murray at heart over the past however many years he's been there. I think he'll do what he says he's going to do. And I, and I agree, the parks are there to be used. And I, I don't know that this will overwhelm the park. I think, I think the only real issue is, is the parking. And I'm going to agree with And I'm going to agree with, with Rosa Alba too, I may as well, we've only got two meetings left. I think, I think if we can limit the access from this development to the park via automobile, I think that solves a lot of problems.
So can that, when Rosa Alba brought that up, I had in my head, I'd been thinking about that and didn't know if that was even a possibility. Is that a possibility? Or does that hurt us, the city, the park at all with that?
If the zone change is approved, that's something we look at at the next step. And I don't know if there's any thoughts that Public Works may have on access to the park. But that's something that we would address in the next phase. If there, when I was a strong feeling that vehicular access to the park would negatively impact the park, then that's something that we would include as something, you know, a condition of approval. And that would be part of the master site plan negotiation that we would go through.
Does all the color draining out of Danny's face give us a clue?
I, I did want to say that, I mean, I, I have a lot of appreciation for the elected officials that sit up there at the dais and the job that they have to do and the job that they were elected to do. You have a tremendously difficult job because you have to balance what your constituents say and what they want and what their opinions are. And you have to balance that with applications that come forward and the requests that are made. And I think really to be matter of fact, there's a couple of options that the council has. And the market has shown that mixed use is what is going to make these business developments and these commercial developments viable long term. And so if there's residential uses that are added in, I think this commercial development center becomes sustainable long term. If it doesn't, then you're going to start seeing more vacant storefronts in, in this development. And I think Gary Howland will have a lot of challenges getting businesses to come in without that density. I'm not saying that he can't, but I'm just saying that's a question that you as a council really need to address is, is what is acceptable to you as a city council member? Do you want to see long-term failure of a viable commercial development because residential isn't added in? And that's what all of the developers out there are saying. Like without this adding in the residential use, we don't feel like there is long-term viability of these sites. So that's a huge question that you need to think about and answer as you come forward with your, you know, with your.
I think the biggest concern, and even for citizens, sorry, is the density, is the amount and how much of it. And yes, District Three is the, like this project overall. I mean, and I'll, and you know, I'll be open and with staff I've met with, with him. And we had an open conversation and I'm not wowed, I'm not wowed, but I think his heart is there. But one of the biggest conversations was, is this a project where you're going to capitalize on the location and then put a lot of density? Or is this a location that we all as Murrayites would be proud of, including you? And bringing and really working with us. And I know he is really wanting to work with the city. And, and that's really what I got. So I'm hoping that that is true. But I know the density is what really is, is, is hurt, is what's hurting us. I mean, in our constituents, because all of it's coming forward. And we're feeling that pressure. I want him to be successful in this project. I want the Boyer Company to be successful in their project. But I think just we're missing that component of coming together and having that conversation with residents and citizens too.
Thank you, Mayor Cap, did you, you were going to say something? Thanks Rosa Alba.
I was, I was way back on the traffic in the park. Kind of moved on from there. But what I was going to, what I was going to point out was is that over the years there have been changes made to traffic patterns in the park for various reasons at various times. At one point, it was just, the whole park was one way. You used to be able to do two-way on Constitution Circle. Just saying that, that's something that has been done over the years and can certainly always be considered.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks for that reminder.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Jared on this? All right, hey, thanks Jared, thanks Melinda. Okay, that's it, announcements, Jennifer? No? Okay, anything else from the council, anybody else? All right. Yeah, no kidding, nope, all right, this meeting adjourned, thank you.